So, I don't see Chris. Oh, there is Chris. Okay, Chris, thank you. The opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight that we can come together and see to the business of the town. We pray for our council and mayor. We pray, God, that you would bless them, give them wisdom, help them to do what is best as they see fit for our town. We pray for our residents, God, that we would be healthy and safe and prosperous. We pray for David Armstrong, especially tonight, God. We pray for him and his family. We pray for comfort and for peace in this time. And we pray, God, that you be with us here in this place tonight. Have your will in our community and through this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
One favor?
Aye.
Does any, council has any conflict to declare?
We just kissed a bit. We haven't done the minutes.
Oh.
We got to the minute.
Well, we can still do the, we can still do the... Is there any particular reason for which the conflict of interest declarations do not come after the prayer?
Um, okay, the reason, I think it's under a procedural bylaw in that order.
It should be ordered specified in the procedural bylaw. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Just did that, number four.
And a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12th.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous council meeting for September 12th, 2022.
I second it.
One favor?
Aye.
And now comes the conflict of interest declarations. Any conflicts? No conflicts declared? And we have delegations. The first one is from the Royal Canadian Legion branch number 40. The gentleman is not here. Did you have a specific time, Jason, that he may come?
It started meeting at seven o'clock.
He said seven o'clock. Well, I'm gonna, gonna come back if, if he comes in. And the second delegation is Community Living from Laurelley Carrier. She's not here.
I think Eve is a representative of food.
I know, I know, maybe I can speak to it at the very end because there is an event on October 20th that Laurelley is involved and, but maybe I can leave it at the end if she does not show up.
I believe so. He's in the back.
So let's go on to general reports. General Government Report. Jason?
Thank you, your worship. So it's General Government Report for October. It is budget time, so we are putting together some preliminary numbers for Budget 2023. Of course, very different this year with St. George being amalgamated into the larger Eastern Charlotte. So we're also putting together the budgets for the LSDs or the rural areas, as well as the Village of Blacks are, where all of those budgets together, so. The lower bridge installation work started today, so that should be, the lower bridge should be closed for three weeks as we do some installation work on the sewer of Main. Canal Beach, I was just waiting a power hookup, which we expect to be finished this week, as well finishing the interior work and plumbing and exterior work, such as fencing and guardrails to the yard parking area. The industrial park planning project, which is on, on agenda for tonight, that sees additional assets being put into the industrial park area. Municipal designated highway, the awarding of tenders also on schedule for tonight. That's for the malpleasant curb and sidewalk work. Coastal Link walking trail, we're still waiting some final work on waypoint signage, which seems to be done today, as well as some finishing work. And we're looking at putting a news release together and a trail opening event for this month. Veterans banners, we have started putting up veterans banners throughout St. George today as well and should be completed by the end of this week. The, we've done some preliminary discussions with developers, looking at a project on Brunswick Street. It's currently owned by a developer and a developer without property looking at possible projects in St. George. Main Street, we are still waiting two flowerpots, the cast iron flowerpots, much like the ones we have. Hopefully, we'll get those by the end of this month. Project claims with end of summer comes the, the start of the busy time of putting in claims with, mostly with the province, through some of the projects that we've done. The resurfacing of the basketball and pickleball courts, we were hoping to get those done in September. However, due to a number of delays, we'll have to do those next season. So as far as the pickleball courts are concerned, much of the, the work has been done. We actually even have the, the surfacing material on stock and on storage at the Town Hall. So we'll complete those in, in the spring. Dangerous and unsightly buildings, there are three open property, files for properties in the town, as well as two building permit rejection files open. We're looking at further discussions with the owner of a property on Main Street, looking at trying to work through some negotiations on costs for a possible development property. Playgrounds, end of the year repairs can continue to be completed this month for our two playgrounds. We've done some updating with some repairs already. Lands at J O Spinning, we are examining the existence, the existing vacant lands here at J O Spinning to see what, what they could facilitate. One possibility is some childcare. Certainly, we see childcare as a very big topic, especially with, with Canada, with lots of funding being available. We're also working on some easement agreements for municipal services with the Granite Town Hotel. Digitization of town records in partnership with the provincial archives. We've completed digitization of all council minute meetings from 1904 to 2003, so we have digital copies at the Town Hall. As well, the original copies are now at the provincial archives and can be referenced by anyone, but they're also there being kept in a much safer environment than what we could offer. Just an FYI for everyone, Glenn Porter at CBCL will be retiring at the end of the month and the town sends best regards and many thanks for his work over the years. As far as residence, residence complaints, had some complaints earlier in, in the last month of youth hanging out at Day of Interest Center. We've done some updated patrols and talking with some of the youth and updated some signage. Seems to resolve itself. Dogs running at large, residents are reminded that dogs must be kept on their own property and must be licensed each year. We have been advised by the SPCA that kennel cough has spiked in our area, so dogs run at large can spread that. Wild animals, we've seen increase as well for this time of the year. On calls regarding wild animals, such as raccoons and bears, residents are asked to contact the Provincial Wildlife Department at 755-4040 if they have any concerns or complaints. So that's the General Government Report for October.
Questions? I have two questions. Why they stop at 2003 with regards to digitizing the archives of the minutes of the council?
Yeah, we have to keep paper copies on hand as part of our municipal record authority. So we have up to 2003, the physical hard copies of the Town Hall. So the previous ones were just more or less being archived, so we've actually archived them and digitized them. Everything has been digitized, so even the '03 to current day is digitized as well, so, but we have to keep them on, on site.
Okay. And what is the, the exact issue with the easement with the Granite Town Hotel?
Yeah, so right now, the easement only goes halfway to, through his lot, where actually the service easement should go all the way to the main, to the Main Street. So we need to update that, as of right now, it just shows an easement basically from the driveway to the hotel, to the town, to the line. So that easement is, not only serves this building, but also serves the splash pad. So they've asked us to update that, so we're updating that.
So that, the easement on that side of the building belongs to the Granite Town? Like the, the road that comes in it is on the Granite Town property?
Uh, the road belongs to them, yes, but the easement should include the full length of, of the services servicing this building and the splash pad. It only, the easement agreement only covers half of that. So if, say, for example, you know, maybe 100 feet up their, up their driveway, the, the line was to break according to the easement agreement, that would be on the, on, on the hotel to fix. So that's certainly not right. It also serves this building, it serves the splash pad, so we're updating that easement that it would be a 50/50. So we both need to share that.
Are there any money involved?
Uh, money? No. I mean, there's, there's certainly cost to doing it with an updated of an easement agreement and a survey. So we're talking, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I, I just noticed that Mr. Kevin Mary from the Royal Canadian Legion branch 40 is here. So I want, I don't want him to actually stay very long if he doesn't want to, so I'd like to give him that.
Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor and council, on behalf of the members of the St. George Legion, on behalf, behalf of the members of the St. George Legion, we want to show a little bit of appreciation. We appreciate the town looking after putting the banners up for us and greatly appreciate it because if it wasn't for you fellows doing it, we, our banner, banner program would never have been as successful as it has. So I'm, I'd like to make a donation to the town for $2,000 for the help of...
Thank you, sir. I, we thank you for your service, not the veterans, so, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And we can move on with the number 7B update on the local government reform.
Thank you, your worship. So work continues, as mentioned earlier, on budgeting numbers for 2023 across two municipalities, two former, soon to be former municipalities and six local service areas. Some costs are now in for 2023. We've been continually going back and forth and updating a little bit with the organizational chart for the, for Eastern Charlotte as well. Staff of the two municipalities will be working closer together over the, the next few weeks, assisting in completing the budget for 2023, as well as several migration efforts, everything from our financial systems, our accounting systems, thankfully, those are the same. But we also look at IT, thankfully, we do have the same IT professional, but even just trying to work towards migrating the two offices for 2023. And there was a good turnout for the candidate info session that was held here on September the 28th. And so that is really the only updates for local government reform.
Questions?
What's the organizational chart? What is that exactly?
Uh, who reports into who?
When reports are due?
Yeah, who would be reporting into who, so, you know, sorry, hierarchy.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had the two candidates that want to run for the election who approached me to ask me where they should turn on their nomination papers.
Uh, yeah, so that, if they go into Elections NB.ca, all one word, they can get information for candidate information on that website.
There is not any specific location designated?
I don't believe as of right yet. I don't think he has a location. But there is a returning officer that is for our area, so.
So right now, is there an office in St. Stephen where someone can go and turn on his papers?
No, I don't believe as of right yet. Again, I, you have to check with Elections New Brunswick. I, I can't comment on what they, what they have.
Well, so right now, the, there is a date where something basically starts at eight o'clock. So until then, there is no place to actually turn on the papers.
I, I don't, I don't know for sure. Like, we don't, as far as municipal staff, we don't get involved with elections. The most we've ever actually done was this, was host this candidate. Typically, that's a taboo for municipal staff to get involved with the political side of, of the campaigns and stuff. So Elections New Brunswick, just like the province, will say that that's at arm's length. We all tend to stay away from anything Elections New Brunswick does. And if there's questions they have, even with the unfortunate mailouts that came out that was, had misinformation on them from Elections New Brunswick, that's been pushed back up to the province. Many people received mailers saying that they didn't have to vote in the next election. That was brought up this weekend to Minister Lang at the U M B conference, to which, you know, he's, he made it, made it aware that the province is at arm's length of Elections New Brunswick. So, so, you know, regards to the question, I'm really not sure what they're doing. I know there's a hope. They typically will have a returning office and I do believe that it's going to be in St. Stephen. Outside of that, that's, that's all I would know.
So what's the side, the side that you said that they should look at?
Pardon me?
The side?
Elections NB.
Yeah, Elections NB.ca.
Elections NB. Okay. I just wanted to give you the link. Okay, very good. Oh, they open today? The old Kent building? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, the old Kent building, okay. Move on to 7C, Fire Report. Who is the chief?
Thank you, your worship. For the month of September, we responded to 11 incidents. Four of the incidents were inside of town and seven were out. Two were motor vehicle accidents, three were alarms, one ambulance assist, one station coverage in St. Andrews, a brush fire, two structure fires, and an off-road rescue. Two firefighters have been working on their firefighter, one J P Airs in conjunction with Musquash Fire Department. So thank you to Musquash for taking these students on and helping them. As far as equipment goes, we had to do some emergency repairs to the sump drain on Unit 451. Thankfully, the technician that usually does that work for us happened to be in the area, so he, he got it within a couple days of, of it being broken. The SCBA units all went through their annual respect inspections. One had to be sent away for a minor repair and we should have it back any day. And all of the engines will be going, the, the trucks will be going for motor vehicle inspections and oil changes in the coming weeks. That's what I have for a report for this month.
Do you have to make any special arrangements for Halloween or hopefully?
We don't have so much trouble as we used to.
Um, Halloween, I hate to even say, I hate to jinx us, but we haven't had a fire on Halloween in, in five years.
That's, that's good.
We went from having all of our fires on Halloween to, to none. So, so no, we, we don't do, do anything. We had been in years past handing out candy. We, we used to go there and have supper and get ready because we knew we were going to be working and then that transitioned to handing out candy and then COVID came along and put a stop to that and hadn't really thought about whether we were going to bring it back this year or not, but we'll see.
Updates on your equipment you're raising for?
Still waiting for batteries that I ordered last year. There's an SCBA somewhere on its way. There's some bunker gear coming. I, I don't even pay much attention to when I'm ordering it now because you don't know when it's going to come. It could be, it just, we order it as, as we need it and hopefully someday it gets here. That's the best I can tell you. Yearly budgets don't really mean much now when it comes to equipment. It's, it's difficult, very difficult.
Any other questions, Chief?
Nope, I'm fine.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
And the next one is 7D, Building and Planning Report.
All right. So you guys have the copy of the zoning bylaw 25C. Pardon me. So this has a separate report which I provided council. This goes through some of the, pardon me. I do need a glass of water, thank you. That's better. So yes, this separate report talks about some of the proposed revisions from that working group we had with, with council. That was a week ago, where we went through the different agricultural sections and other pieces of the bylaw which council had some questions about. And so that's going to be an item on the agenda for later in the, tonight's meeting. I also raised attention to the fact that the St. George Municipal Plan bylaw, which had the third reading, would be ready for, to be packaged with the background study, to be stamped, signed, and sent to the Department of Environment Local Government. So this is just one of the sort of steps you need to take when you're adopting one of these bylaws. As a total of permits, there's been 18 building and development permits to date, three new in the report period. The total value is over $600,000. And with regard to enforcement, we're working on two files. And now one of these two files is coming closer to compliance and we're working to make sure it doesn't come to council's desk. But the other one might come to council's desk and we'll have to go into closed if it has to go to council for a decision on what to do with it. There is orders to comply which staff can issue under the Community Planning Act or the Building Code Administration Act. But when it comes to enforcing the decision, it would be up to council to decide to take it a step further, which would be going to court. So we've done everything we can with both these files and we're hoping, hoping that neither will have to come to council for decision. But we've been working hard to, to get people to comply with the bylaws the town has laid down. So just wanted to raise that as a port reminder for everybody when it comes to obtaining permits for construction, as they do pertain to public safety. And, and it's not just about adherence to town bylaws. So that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Questions? I have two questions. An appeal of an order in any administrative process is an essential step. So if someone gets an order and wants to appeal it, what is the process?
It would be, it would be handled in the, the court system.
So the, so there is not any internal, internal, within the municipality appeal? Like if, if, if an owner gets an order and, and he wants to contest it, is there any process through which he can appeal the order from the inspector within the municipal, I guess, apparatus?
If it's, if it's an order under the Dangerous and Unsightly Premises bylaw, yes, there is. It would go, basically council could set up a, an appeals committee. And that's happened actually in the previous council. And council delegates to a committee or sets up a committee of its own members to handle the appeal.
So it acts as a tribunal?
But that's, that's specific to that legislation when it comes to a violation of zoning or the building bylaw, which is, finds its authority in the Building Code Administration Act. Now, the only appeal would be in front of the judge. So that's a, it's a pretty, it's taken to quite a serious step if council says, yes, there's a violation. We're, yes, we're going to take it to the next level, so.
Again, I'll supplementate to this one. There is a tribunal that's set up under that act for a case in which there is some sort of a dispute on a zoning, about how, who had that discussion with the Regional Service Commission.
Yeah.
So that tribunal is not involved in this kind of?
It's not involved in the enforcement. So if we're talking about the Assessment and Planning Appeals Board?
Yes.
So that only deals with approvals or denials of permits. So if, if you're denied a building per, or a, a development approval, so to say, you applied for something and it was denied for zoning compliance, then you can take the, the decision of the commission or the municipalities, the case may be, to the appeal board and they can review it to make sure that we applied the act correctly when we did that. It doesn't apply in case of enforcement, though. They don't, they don't have that jurisdiction.
Yes, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for the last week's meeting where we actually spent time and you, you did a lot of work to actually accommodate the input of the game, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions that we have? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
We're moving on to item 7E, Water and Sewage Report. Jason?
Thank you, your worship. The Water and Wastewater Report for the month of September reporting period by Ron Groom, acting foreman. The overall water consumption for the month of September was 7.28 million gallons and a year-to-date total of 63.5 million gallons. The recent rains have helped bring water levels up in our wells, which have remained strong all year long. An overpressure issue was tracked back to the faulty, a faulty component at the pressure-reducing station in Mal pleasant. There is a redundant in the system, so we can maintain normal operations, but parts are being sourced to repair the issue, which has since been repaired. Some minor adjustments were made to the start and stop controls at well six, making it easier on the pump and hopefully extend its life. A small repair was made at the well three, well building around the door seal. A curb stop had to be, to be installed at Three Clinch Street as the old one would not shut off. And the owner was trying to have a new plumbing installed, but consistently running water was hampering their work. Splash pad has been winterized and shut down for the season. Everything was functioning properly and any repairs needed were done. Biweekly sampling has, was done on the water system and everything is well within parameters. The results chart below for micropolic, microbiological testing has also been added to this report. We had an A1 pumping to investigate possible issues with a storm sewer on Brunswick Street. The line appears to have some damage to it, but it is not town-owned, so it will be, be up to the property owner for a repair. Lift station number five on Portis Street had an electrical controller go bad and had to be switched to float control system for pumping operations. The recent thunderstorm caused some minor issues with our sewage lift stations on McAfee Drive. Power breakers had to be reset. When this was being done, it was noticed that the styrofoam had built up again at the station, had to be cleaned out with the vacuum truck. This has been an ongoing issue, requires attention every couple of months. Our electric winch used to lift the sewage pumps in and out of the stations was sent away for inspection. Has it stopped working? A replacement may need to be sawed if ours is not repairable. Monthly samples were sent to St. John Lab. All results are within acceptable limits and results for testing as well is included in the report. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? There was any, any communications with the, the industry who produced this styrofoam beads about a couple months ago?
There was, yes.
There has been any change in their operating procedures?
Uh, it's, it's improved. It has improved.
It has improved.
But, you know, we are still seeing some of those. It depends if the screens are put back in. Sometimes they neglect to put them in, whether they forget joint cleaning, they just don't put them back in. So we have gotten to that situation, but it has improved.
Okay. Because at that time, we were discussing the potential design change that they can block one, one path, clean the other one and then return. But nothing, no change has been made to the system. They're just, they are more.
Screening. Yeah, it's just a screening. That's just more screening is going on.
More screening, okay.
Well, actually, I think when we talked about the styrofoam situation a few months back, isn't there a risk of damaging our pump system with that?
Sure, yeah.
So I guess my question around this, this... So I guess my question around this particular issue is like, are we tracking the cost? Like the cost of the vacuum truck, the cost of our manpower to continue to monitor and keep these things clean? Because at the end of the day, if it's not taken care of and we lose a pump, it's... We have nothing to track this with because now we can see that these styrofoams can in fact damage our system.
Yeah, we do track any repairs anytime we bring in pumping, that is as well. I mean, it's... We track that anyways because of, you know, the financial requirements that we have to do. So, yes, those things are all being tracked. We can certainly track those.
So can you maybe for the next month give us an idea of what we are spending keeping the styrofoam kind of in check?
So like a looking at the sewage lift station, see what the cost would be for... Like how much we spent for suction trucks?
Suction trucks, monitoring?
I mean, monitoring is difficult. I mean, it's manpower going down and looking at it, which is a normal thing we have to do. Certainly, I can provide something along the lines of, you know, an overview of the pumping that's gone on.
I'd be interested in that.
It's... Sure, yeah.
Okay. The electrical winch, like, do we have a cost on the repair of the unrepairable repair on a replacement of this particular thing? Nothing yet?
No, nothing at this point, no.
So how often do we use the winch? Like, is this something that we need?
It would be something we would need.
Do we have a replacement for this?
Nope, it's... We only have one. So if we have to pull out a pump out of a sewage lift station or, you know, typically we'll use that winching system. There's two pumps in every station, so. There's some redundancy that's built into it, so if one pump fails, there's another pump that's there.
There's another one, okay. I'm good.
Thanks. 7F, Transportation Report. Again, Jason?
Thank you, worship. Transportation Report for the month of September prepared for by Ron Groom, Acting Foreman. Mowing and trimming of lawn properties has been scaled back as growing season has slowed down dramatically. A small repair had to be made to the lawnmower deck and a new belt installed. The trackless mowing with the flail has been finished up for the year as well. Flower baskets have been taken down as they had to come down at the end of their cycling. The water tank has been put in away as well as the pump winterized. Schools' old lights were turned back on at the beginning of the school year. Number of signs, the signposts had to be replaced or straightened up this month. A new manhole ring and cover was installed on Latier Road in preparation for more asphalt patching. The Hillcrest Drive work area was paved same time as the patch was done. The winds that accompanied a couple of the storms caused some damage around town. There was a couple of torn banners replaced, brackets that required fixing and the fallen tree at the garden had to be removed as well. Canal Beach area was closed up for the season with picnic tables and garbage cans removed from the beach area in preparation to be put away. The boat docks will be removed later this month, October. Garderel along the parking area of the Upper Falls Bridge had to be adjusted due to sinking posts. We recovered a culvert from along the new walking trail construction that was removed in lieu of a new one. The recovered culvert had only been installed a few years ago and is still usable, so we put it back in stock. Two new members of the works crew attending some training in St. John for traffic control. We have a couple of vehicles experience some odd electrical issues that could not be sorted out here, so that we're going to be sourcing some repairs at a qualified garage. Missing panel on the gazebo here at the McAveick Center was replaced. Old post holes of the tennis court were filled with concrete in preparation for being covered over to the pickleball court. The flags flown at the town poles were all changed to recognize the passing of Queen Elizabeth and to commemorate the new King Charles. More damage was repaired to the walkway at the Day of Adventure Center. One of the empty buildings is being converted for a storage unit over the winter months for some town equipment. And that's the transportation report.
Thank you, Jason. Questions? Okay, so we're moving on to item eight. Accounts paid and payable in principle September thirtieth, 2022 in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And any questions?
I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but cleaning supplies. You spend a hundred and... Sorry. A hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-one cents for cleaning supplies from Amazon. Really? That can be purchased through Home Hardware, anyplace. That, to me, is unacceptable. I don't feel that we should be ordering our janitorial supplies from Amazon. A cordless vacuum cleaner from Amazon? Really? I mean, a lot of... A lot of this stuff can be purchased in New Brunswick. I sound like a broken record because I feel that stuff like that should be bought here in our province. You have janitorial supplies for the center of two forty-five sixty-five. And then we also spent janitorial supplies for fifty-six thirty-two. That's a lot of janitorial supplies for the... For a month. I just feel that if you have to go to Amazon, then boy, our province is in worse shape than I thought we were because that is unacceptable for a town to be buying stuff from Amazon. That's my viewpoint on that tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I just... I noticed that we've paid the twenty... I know this is just twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, but I noticed that we paid it twice to the bridge heat tape. So I'm just wondering if it... Did it just get posted twice or did we double pay on that?
Those for hangers for the bridge heat tape, was it? Are we talking about the power?
You know what? I see it now. One's lower, one's upper.
Okay.
Okay, so I answered my question there. But what's the tourist bureau? Where is that?
It's the Day of Adventure Center, the old tourist bureau.
The old, the little building?
Yes.
So what would... The powder bill's only twenty-seven dollars there?
It's a sewage lift station that's there.
Okay, yes, okay. I do remember that from before. Thank you.
Any other questions? So we are all good, so I'd like to have a motion to approve the accounts paid and payable in principle September thirtieth in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second?
Any favor?
Aye.
New business?
May I? Actually, I wanted to say something right now.
Go ahead.
Jason, I don't know what the procedures are, but can I introduce something? Can I introduce something in the new business? So now that we... In light of this gracious donation that we got from the Legion, I was hoping that we could make a motion to actually move the two thousand dollars that we received from the Legion to the food bank.
So you are making a motion?
A motion, yeah.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor. We received a Santa Claus came a bit early for the town and gave us two thousand dollars from the Legion in recognition of our help for the... Setting up the banners, the veteran banners. So Councilor Dattorakis puts on a motion to donate these two thousand dollars to the food bank that we received today. There are this unbudgeted money. It's the Santa Claus who actually gave us two thousand dollars. We express our appreciation to the... To the... To Mr. Merrick from the Legion. And there is a motion to actually give these two thousand dollars to the food bank. Anyone wants to second this motion? I will second the motion. It's a good idea. Do you have questions?
Jason, are we allowed to do that by law to donate them? Is it in our right to do that?
Yeah, definitely. Counsel can, you know, can allocate funds however it wishes, so it can be done, yes. I guess the only thing is that it was passed to be put on for a certain item, so.
The banners. Maybe I'm wrong.
Is that what it's for?
That's what I assumed the money was for.
Yeah.
Because we pay for them to be...
I'm sorry, let's go on. So we have questions. So I want to start from the right here.
I didn't know this.
I asked my question.
Okay, to Jason.
I have another question that I would take into consideration, but I won't vote for it at this time.
Okay.
I'm the same as Councilor Rubin. I'll take it under consideration, but I'm not prepared to vote for it at this time.
Okay, sure, okay. And...
I just thought it was towards the cost. That's why I'm not anti-the food bank or anything. I just thought that was to help with the cost of hiring somebody to put the banners up.
And I felt that as well. I wasn't clear on what it was for.
My understanding is that we are doing this for the Legion because the town has chosen to actually show its appreciation for the Legion and we're doing that regardless if we're getting this to half thousand dollars. We got the Legion to come back and says, "We appreciate that you are appreciating our, I guess, our service." And they gave us this to actually for all the past year that we supported them. So... So let's... From what I understand, it is moved that we table this for another time. This what I did, this how you... I can interpret your position, Councilor?
I would like... I think we should table it till we... For another time.
Okay, so... Okay, so all in favor for tabling this proposal, motion?
Aye.
So it is tabled. So we are moving on to new business, new zoning bylaw 25C. And I guess there are a few things that need to be done under this item. The one is to actually do the first reading by title only, right? Setting a public hearing for a day for a public hearing for the zoning bylaw and also request the views of the PRAC on the zoning bylaw. So there are three steps. So... Any questions before we ask for a motion to actually... Go through the first reading?
Do you have any on it? Do you have any to add?
Oh, no, I'm just up here for questions, if you have any.
No, I express my appreciation for the work that you did on that one. You did a very good job. In council, has any question? Okay, so... No, so I guess... Go ahead.
I make a motion that we have the first reading of the zoning bylaw 25C.
I'll second that motion.
Any in favor?
I also make a motion that we set the public hearing date for the zoning bylaw 25C.
Do you have a specific date proposed?
Is it fourteen or fifteen days from today?
It's twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
But you can... You could set it for your next council, just before your next council meeting, if that's convenient?
We have to have the public hearing first, correct?
Before you do third reading, yeah.
Okay. Twenty-one days is going to be before the hearing, right?
Twenty-one days, we have to have a public hearing.
Or longer.
Or longer, yeah.
You're thinking six-thirty on the night before the council meeting, correct?
Yeah, you could do that.
But if... The only parameter which can complicate things is that this is a fairly significant work here. So if all of a sudden five or six people show up and they have comments to make, it can run over half an hour. That's the only thing. That's why I like the twenty-one days personally, you know?
Whatever date twenty-one days from today is then...
Okay.
Twenty-one from tonight?
Yes. So you have a date?
Post tomorrow, so.
Okay, twenty-one days from tomorrow.
Second.
Second of November?
Second of November?
Second.
Okay, so you move for the second of November?
Yes.
So we have a motion for having the public hearing on November the second? Any in favor?
Or do we give a time?
Six-thirty, yeah. Seven? And the number A3 is to request the views of the PRAC on the zoning bylaw 25C. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we request views for PRAC on zoning law 25C.
I'll second it.
Any in favor? Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Item nine B, the results of tender for Mount Pleasant curb and sidewalk, MDH 202204. Jason?
So this is 2204 Mount Pleasant Road and curb sidewalk, phase two. It's a municipal designated highway project that we were awarded through the Province DTI. Just bids were closed and three bids were received. Were opened at 2:00 PM at September the 29th at the Town Hall. And read aloud, CBCL Unlimited was on hand to provide a review of these bids. Tenders were received for the construction of curb and drainage work on Mount Pleasant Road with new sidewalk construction on the northern side of the road between Civic number eighty-eight and ninety-six. Following contractors submitted tenders, the corresponding bids, Fairville Construction, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six. Al Sanford and Sons, four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, seventy-eight cents. NRB Construction for five thousand, six hundred and... Five thousand, sixty-seven... Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight, three, five, and fifty cents. All the... This includes HST. No mathematical errors were found in the submitted tenders. All tender submissions include appropriate tender security. The tenders... This tender, the engineer estimate for the project was three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, fifty cents pre-tax. All tender submissions included appropriate tender security in addendum. Additional costs would be approximately thirty-three thousand for engineering and the contingency in this project is at twenty thousand. The project funded three hundred and sixty-five thousand from the municipal designated highway program for the province with additional eighty thousand funded by the town for its municipal designated highway for 2022.
So essentially, we are over budget by how much?
We're not... We haven't...
We are not?
Yeah, no. No, I mean, as far as... We'd be over the estimate. The engineering estimate is over by about forty thousand dollars. So, you know, sometimes they... They're graded estimates. Sometimes, you know, prices change as they typically are right now, unfortunately. So the estimate for the engineering is low. And even that's at pre-tax, but the funding that we do have is there. I mean, we have three hundred and sixty-five thousand plus another eighty thousand, so.
Any questions? Okay, so I like...
We award the tender to Fairville Construction Limited in the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty... Three hundred and eighty-three, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Second? Any in favor? Do you know roughly when this thing will be finished, Jason?
Not at this time. First thing in the morning, we'll contact the contractor and try to set up a project meeting with them, hopefully by the first... First thing in the morning, we'll contact the contractor and try to set up a, a project meeting with them, hopefully by the first of next week, so they'll probably give us a timeline. Hopefully before it snow flies, let's, let's our fingers crossed.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Just starting, finishing?
Finishing, finishing, yeah.
It's a small project, I mean, it's not really big, I mean, it's a small project. And we're moving on to item nine C, St. George Industrial Park, planning projects, plural, yes. Jason?
Thank you, worship, so this is a St. George planning project, it's part of an industrial park expansion, building out capacity. So we've been awarded on, on this project, it was actually two awards from RDC. So one part of this is looking at the lagoon area for possible expansion, looking at doing everything from getting the EIA's started for that. The second project is looking at possible well development and well areas, wellfields areas. So all in total, the, the total was about six hundred thousand dollars between the two of them. So typical funding came through with the feds at sixty percent and the province at thirty-three point three-three percent. So that left the remainder of six point six seven percent, which would be on the municipal contribution. So for both projects, it's forty thousand dollars and, and twenty dollars. So four zero zero two zero, so that would be the municipal contribution, and yeah, so that would start the work, the preliminary work.
Okay, I'll leave this on, on what we have voted the previous meeting about.
So, yes, so we are looking at other options as well, you know, for a possible industrial park utility corporation for this project, so once we get into a construction phase, you know, construction of this project could be anywhere between, you know, three to four million dollars for lagoons and wells. So at that point, to sort of look at, if there's any chance of, of liability concerns, we are looking at trying to establish some sort of an industrial utility corporation, so that's yet to sort of come to light as of yet, does take some time, so we hope to have more answers, at least definitely before we get into the point of making an application for any construction. And really, this work here will tell us really how much the cost of it is to, to build a new lagoon, as well as if there's actually water and the cost of, of building out another well, so. You know, we may get to the point as well where there's no water, we may get to the point where costs are so absorbent that, that it's just, it just doesn't make sense to build this. And, you know, that will take, it will take, to do this work, we're probably looking at about six months at least, at least, and at that point, you know, we may be also looking at the industrial park not needing the new capacity. We are seeing reductions each quarter with the amount of industrial water that's being used, so we may get to the point next year and say, you know, there's really no need for more water, there's no need for a new, a new industrial lagoon, because the capacity, the need is just not there anymore, so. So this, this project would, would do all of that, it would sort of paint the picture of how much a, a full construction would cost, but I think it's, it's important to also outline that, you know, when we do get to construction, there will be always a municipal portion, so. You know, we really don't know what that's going to look like at this point, and, you know, is it going to be the municipal portion? Would that be paid by industrial users? That's a, that's a question yet to be answered.
I want to remind the council of, of our discussion in the previous meeting, because it has a context with this item. In the, in the previous meeting, we have agreed to ask the opinion of a lawyer about if we can protect the ratepayers of St. George if we move on to the next phase for the construction by actually ensuring that the cost of development for the new park would be shared by the whole Eastern Charlotte and not by the very limited number of ratepayers of St. George. And I just want to inform you that it took some time to learn that our town lawyer is vacationing in Florida until November, and she's not engaging in any sort of business with the town. She gave us the names of, of two lawyers who are dealing with municipal matters, and I personally contacted them, and they both declined, which kind of interesting when you give to a lawyer a job and he says, no, I don't want to do it. And finally, we made a last effort today and we sent another, another inquiry to which firm?
McKinett Cooper.
McKinett Cooper, it's a, it's a big law firm that deals with government projects. And hopefully, we're going to have an answer from them if they are interested, but I was really disappointed about how all this effort so far has not brought me as any legal input. The only other thing that I, I want to actually mention that we should know is we learned from the deputy minister that we do have the authority to do that. We, as a council of St. George, we do have the authority to actually proceed with actually setting up a corporation for the industrial park expansion. That will include any expansion of its infrastructure. So, any questions for Jason?
The, the fact that we're doing that doesn't preclude us from putting a motion on the floor tonight to go ahead with this. No?
No, 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 that doesn't preclude us, my, my, my only concern is if we set up a precedent.
No, no, I, I just want, because I mean, if we did this, that's not going to mess up what we were going to do as a corporate, if we formed a corporate.
It may.
They're almost hand in hand, you know, the time it'll take to do, if we, you know, work to find a lawyer to do this, and it's going to take some, some time, even just setting up a corporate board and such. So it's something you would do while this is also going through its phases of.
Put this on the, motion on the floor tonight to, to go ahead with this, the forty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It's a study, to see if we, if it's going to even work.
If there's no water there, it's dead in the water.
It's dead in the water.
Yeah, exactly. I will put it forward as a motion tonight that we go, we do this.
I'll second it. We waited nine months to get okay for to do this, nine months. We've been sitting on it for thirty days or longer. This part of the project needs to go forward, six point six seven percent, unheard of, unheard of.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have the funds to do it, if we do? It will not be transferred over to the Eastern Charlotte entity, this is for the town of St. George. So I say go for it. It's, it's, it's a study, that's all it is. Going forward with, with the mayor saying, yes, that's the second phase for sure, but there's several projects, probably in Eastern Charlotte, that are going to be in the same boat, well, I know there is, I know there is. There's, there's a couple of big projects that are, you know, in probably the same situation we're in. But for this one here, I see no issue with that, to, you know, forty thousand dollars, it's a good investment out of, you know, seven hundred thousand. So I'd say go forward with it.
So have a motion and a seconded, to actually move on with spending forty thousand dollars for this study, for a lagoon and a well development, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Laura Lee is not here, Emma. Correspondence?
Yes, your worship, so just one, one letter in correspondence for this month, and this was from the Cornerstone Tabernacle. It's been distributed to council, and to summarize, they're just thanking council for its attention on the roadwork that was done on Marsh Lane during the summer.
Yes, it's very nice to have a nice letter. We actually had, we actually had another, another letter, I guess, they did not see, this is, they, they wrote to the whole council but not to Jason, about an inquiry about, about the need for daycare in our, in our area, and I, I took personally to address it and say that we agree, we have so many other issues, and we, but this one, and we have actually proposed to actually give a piece of land to an organization who provides the service to actually go ahead with that. So I did not hear it back, but we did receive that letter and we did respond to it.
Worship, I'll, we'll, we'll add that into record.
Okay, thank you. Public presentations. This is the time where everybody can spend five minutes. Do you want to speak about this for five minutes?
Mr. Mayor, your worship in the council, I'd like to thank you, Laura Lee Carrier, the executive director of Community Living Center Regrets, she's at another meeting at the same time. My name is Eve Hughes, my information's on the back of this announcement, and this month is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So employment is a large component of the community living initiative, and this is a national promotion. We have very short timeframe this year, we're hoping to raise awareness at least, and I have a flyer that I can send out also by email. However, stuff gets lost in the shuffle in emails sometimes, so it's my intention this week to go out and talk to as many businesses as possible. And the promotion is very simple, it involves displaying blue and purple lights, which are also sort of Halloween colors, and there is a small cost, so I will be calling in person on businesses and sending these by email. The back of the form is, I like to have something in my hand, and also, the form is not interactive, so the business or owner or manager could fill out the form, snapshot it or scan it back to me, and we hope that for a relatively small cost, as many businesses as possible will light up on Thursday, October the twentieth, which is only ten days away. Next year, we're hoping to get going early June or July, possibly ask for small donations to support nonprofits and smaller businesses, and so it's an opportunity to be part of a national promotion and raise awareness about national, it's National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So I'm hoping to talk to a lot of people in the next week, and if you know anyone with a business, please pass on the information, and I will be out on foot tomorrow. I've contacted, I've talked with Julian Cox at the Chamber of Commerce, and they will also be sending out an announcement. Hopefully, anybody with a website, if I send this by email, they can also post this for us. And there is a website and a video, a YouTube video that's very informative, and also the Oden Network, which is the disability network. So very important promotion to raise awareness for employability of persons with disabilities. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, I just want to tell you that, that, just some time ago, do we still have that little gift card that we got from JDI? Like this sum that the mayor has the authority to do it, because he got a little, a little, a little small gift from, from a corporate donation, and we'll, we'll send you, my, my personal contribution is a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars card that you can use for buying, buying lights for this.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this briefly.
Thank you very much. Any other statement by members of the council? I guess this will start from the right. Councilor Allison?
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, it was a good meeting, and hopefully everyone starts staying warm, it's getting colder out there now at night for us.
Yes, I wish to.
It's, it's been a little while, sorry, it gets easier for me because I can't see past. Thank the gallery for coming this evening. On behalf of the town of St. George, it certainly is an honor and a privilege to put up the banners for this, the war veterans of our Eastern Charlotte community. That's a, no issue, far as I'm concerned, to be done. Now I want to go on a little bit about the transition advisory committee. The committee's pretty well wrapped up now as things are going towards the election. We have three people in this room that have been on that committee, and we have a wealth of knowledge around the table while this process is going on. We've made suggestions, but we certainly hear different things that are going forward. About what you're going to hear coming out is the government has been engaged with the public, and that is the committees. And as far as that goes, as time goes on, it was just a process that's going on, and it's pretty well, again, I was a little disappointed with the award maps here two weeks ago with the same ones I seen six months ago. And it was quite, it's changed a little bit, but not very much in regards to that. Now, as most of you have received your new tax assessment, the only thing I have to say about that is probably not the best timing, as far as I'm concerned, you know, inflation's at an all-time high, you know, bank rates are increasing quite consistently, and this is just an extra burdening on the family and homeowners in the area of all of New Brunswick. You know, just an extra little strain, and a young family growing up today, it must be very hard, I would think, and even pensioners going on as they go, you know, try to survive, I mean, the winter time's coming, heater and fuel is going up, electricity's going up, you know, and now the MLAs want more money, well, when you know. And, and the answer from the provincial government is the municipality should reduce their tax rate. Well, we no longer exist, so that's going to be up to the government, so this should be very interesting to see how that's going to work out for us. We know we're going to have less money, we're going to pay more, are we going to get less? I don't know. You know, and the other final thing that I, I've noticed recently, the province would like to have a five-year budget. Now, I don't know anybody that can run a household or anything for five years on the same budget, year after year after year, especially with the increases, the way things are. Power, gas, food, everything, you know, and just, that's my rant for today, and maybe next month you'll get another one. So thank you very much for coming.
Councilor Colton?
I don't know if I can follow that, you know, that is the truth, I don't know if I want to.
Well, I'm sorry, it's just one of those things I had on my mind, so.
Well, I'm, I'm going to go there because this is the, the time to actually.
No, I'm not finished yet.
I'm sorry, Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Your worship, sit down till I finish.
No, Councilor, you know, it should make you up your mind.
I just said I didn't know if I could follow.
Okay.
All right. No, I, I'm all kidding aside, I'd like to thank the Legion very much for their generous donation to help with the banners, and I can remember when that initiative was started many years ago, and it was started by Robert Malonson. He came to the Legion with an idea that it would be a great way to honor the veterans, and I may be wrong, and people can correct me if I am, but that caught on fire and went all across Canada. It went all across New Brunswick, it went everywhere, and I want to thank the Legion for that. Unfortunately, Robert has passed, so it's, I worked with Robert, so I know how it was dear to his heart, that initiative. And again, I'd just like to thank the Legion for their generous donation tonight, and now you can get up and have your say.
I want to recognize an important occasion that is coming up, which is the passage of the, the act which essentially sets St. George to, to, to surrender incorporation certificate in about two months. in about two months. And I remember when, when the battle was fought, we talked about the lack of consultation, the terrible time that was introduced because at that time we had a COVID. And things happened without us agreeing, but the powers that be in Fredericton said that this is good for us. So we're sent to, to, to get reformed. And we are now part of that reformation. The process that Counsel Ruben described is not a surprise. It's consistent with what has happened over the last year. I have been part of the, the, the new mandate that they were passed on to, to our municipality or to the, to our region, to the Eastern Charlotte. The new mandates on business development, tourism promotion. I, there was a very nice article today in Telegraph Journal about the municipalities taking on now social development homelessness. So there is a lot of passing on the back from the provincial government, but no tax points passed on to the, to the, to the, to the residents. And I am part of the same committee that Counsel Ruben spoke. And it is very consistent with what has happened getting here. We pretend that we consult and they pretend that they listen. And it's unfortunate, but this is where we are. Now, with regards to, with regards to, to where we go from here, I'm hoping that as we move forward to January 1st, and as we move out towards the election, the people who actually decided to, to run will actually step forward and communicate a vision for our, for our region. Because we have to do the best with what we, we got. And we have several candidates here and I hope that in the next month, they will come up forward and, and communicate how they see the challenges, how they see the solutions, and we can try to do the best with the cards that we're given. And I guess two years from now, we may make the big decision about this great amalgamation when we vote for the provincial election. Thank you.
I would just like to add thank you to the Legion. And yes, indeed, Robert Melonson was the very first person to do it in New Brunswick. He went down into the States because I did a big story about it. He went down to the States, saw some town that had the banners, came back and brought the idea back to the Legion here. And I remember I was there when the very first banner was hung up there in front of the post office and it was for Al Barker. And it's a wonderful project and it's just spread everywhere and I think that's wonderful. Nothing else to say.
Thank you. Counsel Rodriguez.
Thank you to the Legion for their, for their generous donation and thank you to council for the clarification. I thought it was just a donation to the municipality as for us to disperse the funds in whatever area that is. And thank you, Ruben, for your, for your speech. I don't know a single, I, I agree. I don't know a single person that, I said Counsel Ruben.
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. You know, I don't know a single person that isn't struggling at the moment. It's the price of gas has gone up, obviously. Food is incredibly expensive. On that note, I went to the UMB conference and there they discussed, obviously, it was like the cost of living, housing, policing, et cetera. I'm going on a little tangent here, but I think it's important to say this, but like going into the room, it was pretty obvious that there was a lack of balanced representation. And I think that if we're going to be planning for the future, we need to have a table that reflects the needs of everyone. And it's important that we don't exclude, you know, different folks from the conversation. And, yeah, so that's something I need to, to bring out here. The second thing, the third thing I want to talk about that we didn't talk about, that Jason didn't bring up, it was this Thursday, this Friday, there's supposed to be a, a film screening for ET. I'm still waiting for confirmation from the council if anyone wants to help for that. And if you can't, then I'm looking to the public if you would like to lend a helping hand, so.
That's for Halloween, I suppose.
Yep, it's for Halloween.
Okay. Counsel Armstrong.
I think I'm going to pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to inform everybody that the date of the next regular meeting of the council is Monday, November 14 at 7:00 PM here. And without further ado, any motions adjourned.